Okay, hello everybody, welcome to our special council meeting. And we are going to have to take a recess at a certain point, but we're going to start now. We have a couple of questions from our usual attendee anonymous. The question is, I asked this question at the last council of Hampstead Special Council meeting on August 23rd. I think my question was not understood as the answer did not provide the information I was searching for. I tried to rapidly type and send more information to clarify my question. But as I was typing the question, an answer was closed, so I'll try again. This week with the same question, but with more elaboration. My question is more want to process that as a specific question. I understand that there is only one public question period for special council meetings. I would like to have confirmation that the public might ask any question during this singular question period despite it not being on the agenda. Give me one second, I have to try to move this question forward. Okay. Despite it not being on the agenda, I seem to recall that the question must be related to the agenda of the evening when it is a special council meeting. Who will decide if the question is allowed? Thank you. Okay. All side of the question is allowed and I'm going to turn it over to our town clerk, Pierre Tap, to answer the question about whether the questions must be related to something on the agenda.
That's in the city and town act that they must be have one, only one question period and that the question are supposed to be about the item on the specific agenda of the special council meeting. That's in the town and city act, city and towns act.
Thank you very much, and that does answer the question, but again, I will say that, as I said so many times over the past 16 years, if residents have questions, you can contact me. You can call me at my number up till midnight, my home office number. You can email me, which is even better, and you will get a fast answer. So you don't have to wait to a council meeting to ask the question. Okay, now moving on, let's see. Let me see, the next question is can you please indicate, oh, sorry, it's from anonymous, hypozyme, different anonymous. Can you please indicate how a resident can find zoning bylaw 1001 on the town's website? Does it still exist? I have found the list of the bylaws, but cannot retrieve this particular one. Thank you. Well, I'm pretty sure it exists.
As far as I know, it's on the website, Mr. Mayor. I'll be surprised it's not there because as far as I know, it's there.
Yeah, I think I use the website often to find bylaws. What you should do when you're going through the bylaws, remember the first batch, the whole first section is not zoning bylaws. 1001 is a zoning bylaw, so go right by all those other bylaws. Nuisance, dogs, all kinds of things. Go to the second section, which is zoning bylaws, and 1001 should definitely be there. Okay, and for, okay, next. David Baker, I was wondering if these council meetings will contribute, or sorry, will continue to be livestreamed once in-person meetings resume. It has been very helpful for us to attend virtually with busy family, etc. This should be a no brainer. Yeah, I believe there's certain technical issues. I would certainly be happy to continue to livestream the meetings once we go live, once we go back to real meetings. I'm looking forward to going back to real meetings. I don't have any problem with streaming them, recording them, streaming them. I think it's certainly something I'd like to see. But in the past, when we've considered it, and I think we did some experiments, the quality of the video and audio left a lot to be desired. But Thierry, our IT expert is around and listening to the meeting, and technology keeps improving. So I'm going to ask him now to make a note after we go live, to back to live meetings, which I don't think will be till the next mandate, that we look for a way at a reasonable cost to to continue to livestream meetings. It's not going to be the same as what we're doing now. This is on Teams and it's a particular thing. So it won't look the same, but I think there ought to be some ways that we can do it, maybe even better than what we're doing now. So I'm asking Thierry to make a note to look into this for a future project. Hopefully as soon as possible after we go back to live meetings. Okay, so I thank you for that. And that. Okay, that's it. That's it for questions. You'll have to give me one second to get to my agenda. And Thierry has responded to me that he's noted my request, so it'll be done. Let me just.
And we do number four?
No, number three first.
Okay.
Just give me a second, I have to get to my agenda, getting there, almost there. Okay. Okay. So we'll start with 3.0, which is adoption of the agenda. It was proposed by councillor.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax, Wax, and resolved that the agenda of the special council meeting is hereby adopted as submitted. Anyone opposed? No. He says to 4.0. Approval payment of a part of the court fees in a particular case. Oh, it was proposed by councillor.
Sorry, what's this?
Item four.
Four.
Can we indicate the amount that we're contributing?
Is this the 15,000 for the DG, 1500 for the DGQ?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
So that's 1500 that we're contributing, correct?
Yeah, that's the amount, and then has already paid their portion.
Okay, so go ahead, Bill, with the.
Yeah, so it's proposed by councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. And resolved that the town of Hampstead pay matra Julius Gray.
Actually, I'm sorry, Bill, I need to accuse myself on this. I'm actually one of the plaintiffs in the case.
Yeah.
So I'm not opposing it.
All right, so then Schaefer and Goldwax?
Okay, so councillor Schaefer, seconded by councillor Goldwax, and resolved that the town of Hampstead pay matra Julius Gray entrust the sum of $1,500 as a total and final contribution to the cost relating to litigation bearing number 500-17-098757-175. Anyone opposed?
No, but I recuse myself.
Yeah, I put a note about it that you didn't vote on this one.
Fine.
Okay.
Done, okay.
Okay, and for those listening, this was a case where we challenged the decision of the the commission that sets the electoral map boundaries for Quebec. And we lost the case. We were joined by a number of people and municipalities, including Coates St. Luke. And I think it was the wrong decision, but the court's rule, and that's that. And this is the last payment that we're making on that subject. Regretful decision, in my opinion.
It wasn't, it wasn't so much a regretful decision. It was just, we didn't make the arguments that the court was waiting to hear. The judgment specifically from the court said that they were disappointed that our side didn't actually make the real arguments that they were waiting for. And so that's, that's, that's actually why we wound up being hit with the with the fees from the DGQ side, which is actually kind of small, but the judgment was what they said, what the judge said was, he was kind of disappointed that we didn't make the argument, that we dropped the argument to the last minute. And as a result, he's hitting us with the fees.
Okay, so I thank you, I thank you, I wasn't there, so I thank you. Okay, notice of motion. We're 5.0. Notice of motion was given by councillor. Councillor.
Again, a second.
Who's giving the notice of motion?
There is only one person for notice of motion.
Yeah, I know there's only one person, but I didn't hear it name, someone.
Can you, can, can, actually, sorry, I'm not clear on what this motion is about.
Okay, this motion is about getting rid of a clause in our bylaw 814, which has to do with gardening contractors. There's a clause in there about noise, and it's duplicated in our nuisance bylaw. So to remove ambiguity, we're getting rid of it from 814. The only one that counts is the one in our nuisance bylaw. That's all we're doing, just making things a little clearer.
That's right.
Yeah, so now, would someone like to make a notice of motion?
Fine, Eddy.
Okay. Notice of motion was given by councillor Eddy, that draft bylaw number 814-1 and by law 814, modifying by law 814 about landscaping, gardening, and earthmoving by a private contractor will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a copy of draft bylaw number 814-1, and a motion dispensed with the reading of said draft bylaw was made. Okay, now we go to 6.0.
Every time you change something negative, you put a dollar.
Can Major Tap, can Major Tap read to me Article 4 of bylaw 814, which we're going to repeal?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the same element in the bylaw about the nuisance, but the hours that the people cannot work are not the same and so on. And that one of the nuisance is more complete, that's the reason.
So just avoid problems. What does it say? Can you read it for me, Article 4 that we're repealing?
Just a second.
Thank you.
I tried to find the document.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, won't be long. Tickle, 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 just a second. Grefe, Genersdahl, Resenziehung. Tickle, tickle, tickle. Won't be long, I'm sorry.
It's okay, just Article 4, nothing else.
Yeah. By law. Okay. It's eight, yeah. Just a second, it's, my computer is very slow, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm here. Okay, okay, I have it finally. Okay, the Article 4 is dealing with this. It's saying that peace and tranquility, whereas residents want peace and tranquility on holiday and during certain period of time, when most are not usually working, it's forbidden to use gas power landscaping before this hour to this hour on holiday and this, and no person shall operate. That's completely about this subject.
Okay, that's the same thing that we have in the nuisance bylaw.
Yes, but the nuisance bylaw is more complete because we changed the nuisance bylaw not a long time ago, just to avoid that there's two ways of interpreting. The thing is better that to have the same thing.
Right, so therefore basically Article 4, you're saying is redundant.
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay, thank you, Major Tap, thank you.
So now, so now, now we're at the draft bylaw passing. It was proposed by councillor.
Schaefer.
Eddy, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. And resolved to approve draft bylaw number 814-1 entitled by law, modifying by law 814 about landscaping, gardening, and earthmoving by a private contractor. Anyone opposed? Okay, so that's adopted. And what we did is we moved Article 4, which was just read to everybody, and it is simply a less complete version of what we have in our nuisance bylaw. Okay, 7.0, another notice of motion. This one having to do with our bylaw 1010. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
Funding.
Funding, seconded by councillor.
Notice of motion.
You need a second, it's only a notice.
Sorry, sorry, just a notice of motion given by councillor. Funding, 8.0 is where we deal with the draft bylaw amendment. So it was proposed by councillor.
Funding.
Funding, seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg. And resolved to approve draft bylaw number 1010-15 entitled by law number 1010-15, modifying tariffs by law 1010. Anyone opposed?
No, just for residents to know, it's just a deposit for the installation of water meters for new constructions.
That is correct. Okay, nobody opposed, so that's adopted. And that brings us to. Another notice of motion, this one having to do with bylaw 1031 having to do with the use and supply of potable water. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
Funding.
Funding, that draft bylaw number 1031 entitled by law 1031-1, modifying by law 1031 on the use and supply of potable water and administration of used water sewer services will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a copy of draft bylaw number 1031-1, and a motion dispensed with the reading of said draft bylaw is made. Anyone, sorry, that's just a notice of motion. Now we get to the actual draft.
Okay, with respect to the actual motion now for the bylaw, is the changes what's highlighted and read?
That's what's being removed, councillor Schaefer.
Okay.
So it's just, all it's saying is that the installation of the meter, sorry, the installation of the water meter, what it's being removed is must be placed just after the main water supply shut-off valve. So we're allowing.
The red portion is deleted.
That's right, so we're allowing some latitude from a construction standpoint to place the meter at a more ideal location, especially for multifamily dwellings.
Sorry, I should have asked this earlier, but why is the free exclusive title de dépôt de garantie solitaires comme suite? Why is it $3,000 for a compte ordre?
It's a deposit.
That's an awfully high deposit for a... Why is there a $3,000 deposit to put in a water meter?
Let me answer that very quickly, Mr. Mayor. That's because a lot of the constructions, particularly new constructions, and the subdivision of, let's say duplexes into multiple units and so on, the owners often, after they have completed their renovation or the constructions, they would delay or they would not want to have a water meter put in. And it's very difficult to make them conform. So the administration believe, your urban planning and public works believe that with a deposit system, it will give people more incentive to comply with the requirement to have a water meter put in, because we need that to be able to measure the consumption in order to do a billing.
Yeah, very good answer. So now, it was proposed by councillor.
Funding.
Funding, seconded by councillor Goldwax, and resolved to approve draft bylaw number 1031-1 and by law 1031-1 and modifying by law 1031 on the use and supply of potable water and administration of used water sewer services. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted, and that brings us to.
To 11, but I think you want to recess, Mr. Mayor. Well, can we do 13 though? Can we do 13?
Well, there's no point. We've covered most of the agenda. Let's recess now. And when we come back, we should be able to finish the rest of the agenda. Okay, so we're at number 11. We'll come back with number 11. We come back, we have to take a recess because we haven't had a chance to discuss a few more things we have to in caucus, so.
So for everyone, sorry, so I interject, for everyone here on council, you have to leave this meeting and get back into the caucus meeting, because we don't have breakout rooms in this setup.
Yeah.
So you have to click on the previous link from 7:00 PM to get into the caucus meeting room. And then when we finish there, you have to come back into this meeting room.
Exactly, and it's very important that everyone does that, otherwise we're going to have echoes. People are going to hear things that are supposed to, so leave this meeting now. Thank you, bye.
Okay. Richard, lower your mic a little bit.
No, because I'm...
Okay.
Is that you are with us now?
Yeah, I am there.
Okay, good. You were not there for the first part, right?
I was there for late in the first part, yes.
Okay, good.
Richard, you're muted. Richard, you're muted. Richard.
Okay, no, I'm okay now.
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to say this before we come back into the...
We are live. We are live.
We are live.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor and councillors, I ask your indulgence in saying the following, because I may not have a chance to do it later on. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Metre Piata for being our quintessential town clerk for the past many years, and I wish him the very best of luck in his retirement. And we truly appreciate his contribution and his suggest and connaissance in all these years in guiding us and the council. Thank you, Metre Ta.
Thank you. It's very appreciated. Very appreciated. Thank you all. And I'm sure I'm gonna miss all of you.
You'll be missed, Pierre.
Thank you.
Is the mayor in the meeting?
Oh, I invited him in. He didn't come in. I invited him in.
Mr. Ta, it goes without saying that I joined Richard's side with the good wishes. And we wish you best of luck in your new challenge, which is the retirement and whatever else you do. All the best.
Very short retirement, but thank you, Councilor El Fassi.
What's the retirement? One or two days?
Oh, three days. And maybe I'll find a job at McDonald's at the weekend if it's too hard.
All the best.
Thank you, my friend.
Terry, I'm trying to connect the mayor into the meeting and he's not accepting, so I'm not sure.
He's not accepting. It's a good one.
I will call him.
You don't want to be part of the meeting.
What about Cherry? Can Cherry connect them?
He's trying. Is the question period open or closed still?
Closed.
No. Question period's finished.
Thank you.
What is she doing? I let her go. She was in the wrong lane.
She's behind you now?
Yeah.
She's behind you?
Yeah. No, she has time left there.
For those of you from the public who are wondering why we're not starting, the mayor has not joined us.
The mayor is there now.
He is...
Okay. The mayor has joined.
He's muted. Mr. Mayor, you are muted. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Okay. No, I was trying numerous times. I kept getting a problem on my think pad. But okay, we're back. We're at resolution 11. And having to do with the sale and development of real estate assets, lot number 5930798, located on McDonald Avenue in Hampstead. So, on motion of councillor... Motion of councillor.
I think...
You're muted.
I think councillor Eddy is muted.
All right. Yeah, Eddy.
Okay, seconded by councillor...
Wiganburg.
Okay, so on motion of councillor Eddy, seconded by councillor Schaefer, and resolved that the proposal from 9377-9155 Quebec Inc. for the sale and development of real estate assets relating to the sale of lot number 5930798 located on McDonald Avenue in Hampstead... and development of real estate assets relating to the sale of lot number 5930798 located on McDonald Avenue in Hampstead be accepted all in accordance with the call for proposals deposited on August 26, 2021. That the promise to purchase for the sum of $1,500... For the sum of $1,534,000. The lot 5930798 located on McDonald Avenue in Hampstead deposited by 93779155 Quebec Inc. is hereby accepted by the town council. That 9377-9155 Quebec Inc. must sign the deed of sale within 30 days. I've written notice to the proponent that the mayor and town clerk be and are hereby authorized to sign the said promise to purchase or any other document relating to this same promise that the mayor and clerk be and are hereby authorized to sign the deed of the transfer of the site of the lot 5930798 located on McDonald Avenue in Hampstead or any other document relating to this deed of transfer. That the mayor and the town clerk be and are hereby authorized to sign any document, take any action, and do all things necessary or useful to give effect to the present resolution. Anyone opposed? No. So that's adopted. For anyone who doesn't know what that's about, we're selling half of the public works yard for 1.53-4 million. And the land will be used by the developer to build either townhouses or something that looks like townhouses. Okay. That brings us to... All I have here for item 12 is an incomplete resolution.
That's for the tennis court. Michelle, send the document to all of you. Send an email to all of you around 5 o'clock today.
Yes, yes, we received it.
Okay, let me find that.
So there's the resolution, Mr. Mayor. If you don't have it, I can read it.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I don't have it.
Okay, so the resolution, item 10.4, it is the granting of contract reconstruction of Hampstead Park tennis courts. Whereas there's been a public call for tenders for the reconstruction of Hampstead tennis courts. Whereas after analyzing tenders opened on August 30, 2021, the lowest bidder conforming with to the requirements of the tender invitation is Construction Moriva Limited. And that's the, that's the whereas's. And now reads the motion. On motion of councillor. Councillor?
We need a councillor.
Where is Mr. Alfassi?
He's muted.
He's mute. Oh, he's back on. On motion of councillor.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Everybody, do anybody hear me?
Yes, we do. Go ahead.
So, I propose...
Perfect. On motion of councillor Alfassi, seconded by councillor.
Wiegensberg.
Thank you very much. It is resolved that the contract for reconstruction of Hampstead Park tennis courts be and is hereby approved as a whole and more aptly delineated hereunder with Construction Moriva Limited reconstruction is for 1.126,547,030 cents. Contingencies of $112,654.73. GST and PST totaling a grand total of 1.424772.53 cents. Anybody against?
Okay, nobody's against, so that passes. And I have found the resolution now, but you had already finished with it. Alright, so that's done. We're back. Item number 13, which is granting of a contract for the repair of sidewalk sections. It is proposed by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer is seconded by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay. And resolve that the following quotation for the following contract be and is hereby approved. The whole is more aptly delineated hereunder. It goes to Kojalak Inc. It's for the repair of sidewalk sections as for specification, 75,177.50 cents. With contingencies, GST, QST, the grand total is $90,757.10. Anyone opposed? Okay, so that's adopted. That's for additional sidewalk work beyond other work that's going on and all those streets that are currently being redone. Brings us to 14. Granting of a contract for the supply and installation of a catch basin. It was proposed by councillor.
Oldworks. Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer and resolve that the contract be awarded to Eurovia Quebec Construction Inc. for the amount of $75,366.11, taxes included. Anyone opposed?
Hold on a second. This is a catch basin in the public works yard. I'm wondering if it's worth our while to spend this now if we're going to be doing come next year, a new public works building.
Mister councillor Edery, is this between a catch basin between 89 and 91 Finchley Road?
Yes. Oh, so it's not the catch basin we've been...
No, no, no.
Never mind. Carry on.
Finchley, Finchley Road.
Okay. Anyone opposed?
No.
Yeah, so that's adopted. That brings us to 15. Oops, here it is. 15.
Adjournment.
Uh, that's funny. A resolution I thought was here isn't here. Doesn't matter.
It is an adjournment, Mr. Mayor.
You want to what?
Adjournment. Item 15 is adjournment.
15 is...
Adjournment.
I know that. 15 is adjournment, but we were talking before and talking about a different resolution. Anyway, it doesn't matter. So...
Which resolution?
Oh.
We don't want to pass the other one anyway, so. It is posed by councillor.
Oldworks. Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer. And resolve this council meeting is adjourned at 9:20 p.m. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay.
I want to thank everyone for their patience while we recessed.
I concur. Good night, everybody. Stay safe.
Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
And happy Labor Day. Sanatovat to everybody.
Right. Sanatovat is correct, yeah. All the best. Good health. Yes.
Okay, good night.
Good night.
Alright. Good night, everyone.
Good night.